Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. The time is now seven o'clock PM. And if you're here to watch the regularly scheduled November seventeenth City Council meeting, you're in the right place. So, but we're going to do two public hearings first before we move into the regular council meeting. These public, these, we have a charter resolution number three oh five and ordinance number twelve twelve that were read into the record at a previous council meeting and we're having a public hearing. So I will start off with the public hearing on Charter Resolution three oh five concerning amending sections pertaining to city elections. This is a resolution by the Maryland City Council of Havant Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of the Maryland Constitution, Article eleven E, Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, and the Havant Grace City Charter, Section nineteen, amending Sections five through sixteen of the city charter generally pertaining to city elections. Is there anybody here in the audience this evening to speak on this charter amendment? Any comments from the council members? Council President?
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we had Stephanie from Board of Elections, Hartford County Board of Elections, come and speak about some objections. And just to clarify the issues, we did include in the, in the public hearing, the amendments that we're making to clarify the issue with the county. And then later today, under twelve A, under ordinances, you'll hear the amendments right out loud. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Council President. Are any other further questions or comments? Okay. Without any other comments or questions, I will now close public hearing on Charter Resolution three oh five. The time is seven oh three. One more public hearing, and that's going to be on ordinance twelve twelve, one two one two, concerning an improvement budget amendment two thousand twenty-five dash zero three for living shoreline maintenance. This is an ordinance by the Maryland City Council of Havant Grace, by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, Local Government Article, the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section thirty-seven of the Havant Grace City Charter, for the purposes of amending the city budget for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-six to address additional allocation of funds for the city of Havant Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Anybody in the audience this evening to speak on the budget amendment, ordinance number twelve twelve? Any comments from council members? Now, any comments from the public or from the council? I will now close public hearing on ordinance twelve twelve. The time is seven oh four. There you go. All right, ready? Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regularly scheduled council meeting of the Mayor, of the Mayor and Havant Grace City Council. The date is November seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five. The time is now seven oh four PM. I will call the roll. Council President Ring Socker?
Here.
Councilmember Boyer?
Here.
Councilmember Schenegas?
Here.
Councilmember Boger?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Ellis?
Present.
All council members are present. Accountant Ford, please join me for the Pledge of Legions and Opening Prayer.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could kindly ask everyone to remain standing as always. It's a great honor and privilege to welcome Reverend Gene Proud of the Proud Evangelistic Association. Sir, welcome back.
It's an honor to be here. Let's pray. Lord, we're coming up on Thanksgiving, so we want to thank you for all of the blessings that you've shown us throughout this year. We remember the last time I was here. Mayor asked for prayer for good weather for the weekends events, and you gave us good weather for that time. Earlier, we've asked for prayer, prayer for rain, and you've given us rain. We cannot possibly express enough thanks for all the things you've done for us. And we ask you to continue to bless us with peace and for the council to be blessed with wisdom and knowledge and patience so that all of our lives can be prosperous and healthy. Amen.
Amen. Reverend, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, item five, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting from November third, two thousand twenty-five. Council have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Boger, and that is seconded by Councilmember Schenegas. Questions or comments on the minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. City council meeting minutes of November third, two thousand twenty-five are approved. Six zero and affirmative. We're now upon item six, which is comments from citizens. This is the part of the agenda. If you're here to comment on an agenda item, now's the time to do so. If you're also here to talk about any other matter of city business that you'd like to address the council with, now's the time to do so as well. Normally what we do is if any citizen prefilled out a form to speak, I will call on those citizens first. After I call on all the forms, or after I read off all the forms, all you have to do is just raise your hand to be recognized and you can come speak. So I have two prefilled out, prefilled out forms, and I'd like to call forward Mr. Thomas Dennison. Good evening, Mr. Dennison. It's good to see you again. Welcome back. Can we have your name and address for the record?
My name is Thomas Dennison, one fifteen Joe Hill Drive in Havant Grace. And before I say anything, the beard game at this circle is fantastic. I would encourage more beard growing during this season, so for those of you. My name is Thomas Dennison. I'm the next gen pastor at Restored Church in Havant Grace. Retired elementary school teacher, having taught eighteen years down the street at Havant Grace, a couple of years with Ms. Bloom. And I currently live here in Havant Grace. I want to briefly talk to you about Christmas in the Park. It's an event that you're going to be discussing at item fourteen, put on by Restored Church where I work. Christmas in a Park is an event that we have done the past two years at Tidings, Under the Stars, and in the cold, and in the cold, and in the cold. It's very, very cold. It's a Christmas service that is unique, but it's extremely simple in what makes it special. It's honestly some of my favorite things. We get to celebrate that God has come to us in the form of Jesus in a welcoming, small-town ways that gives very strong Havant Grace vibes. It's bring your own chair casual, but candlelight beautiful in the park. It's light shining off the water and families huddled close together. It's safe. It's well organized, well casual enough for people walking by to just join us. It's giant plastic dragon over our shoulders and a war memorial off in the distance. And it's a simple message of hope and a future with no politics and no division, only worship with classic carols to a God who loved us enough to, to give us a second chance over and over again. So I just wanted to come and thank you for the opportunity to do that over the past two years and let you know that I'll be sitting here if you have any questions when you get to that item. So thanks for the time. Keep growing your beards.
Thank you very much, sir. I'd like to call forward Ms. Debbie Stathis. Good evening, Ms. Stathis. Welcome. It's good to see you. May we please have your name and address for the record?
My name is Debbie Stathis. I'm at six fifteen Commerce Street, Havant Grace.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm here this evening as the Chair of the Cultural Exchange Commission, a commission established in two thousand nineteen to support the city's twinning with Mumbles Whales. Primary goal of ours is to facilitate visits between our two twin communities. Since two thousand nineteen, Havant Grace has visited Mumbles twice. Mumbles has visited Havant Grace once and was scheduled to visit again in two thousand twenty-six. Sadly, Mumbles will not be visiting next year. The Twining Association has sent a letter sharing their reasons, and this is the letter. "The town twinning movement, in which the UK and the USA have long been active participants, took off after World War Two as an international initiative to promote friendship and understanding between different communities and cultures. Mumbles and Havant Grace have been twins since two thousand nineteen. Groups from Havant Grace were welcomed by Mumbles Community Council and the Twining Association of Mumbles in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-three, while in two thousand twenty-two, a group from Mumbles were guests of the city of Havant Grace and the Havant Grace Twining Association. We have gratefully received an invitation to visit Havant Grace for a second time in the fall of two thousand twenty-six. Having greatly enjoyed our previous visit in two thousand twenty-two, we would normally expect such an invitation to be received with enthusiasm and anticipation. Sadly, these are not normal times. Among our members, we have encountered a marked reluctance to travel to the USA in two thousand twenty-six. There is a widespread sense that visitors to the USA are not as welcome as they were the last time we traveled there. There are even concerns about personal safety, even though we know our hosts would take every possible care of their guests. For varying reasons, so far it has proved very hard to persuade anyone that the risk of visiting the USA is worth taking. This is hugely disappointing. In a time when countries and communities are dividing as never before, town twinning has never seemed so relevant as a vehicle for building bridges, helping to restore trust and civility, and bringing people together from different cultures. But regrettably, concerns about traveling to the US are becoming an increasingly serious impediment. Very best wishes, Ann Smith, Chair, and David Townsend Jones, Vice Chair. Meanwhile, we here in Havant Grace are maintaining our relationships with our friends and Mumbles through Zoom calls, personal visits, and beginning December first, our holiday greetings on our Havant Grace Twinning Facebook page begins December first. I hope you'll tune in and see the holiday greetings from Mumbles and Havant Grace and Hennabond France. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Ms. Stathis. Thank you for sharing the letter. That was the only other prefilled out form I have. I will now open a floor at large. If you wish to speak, just be recognized. Yes, ma'am. Hello, welcome. Good evening. May we please have your name and address for the record?
May Kuroiwa, six oh three Commerce Street.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council President, Council, fellow citizens and residents of Havant Grace. I'm reading one of my poems tonight in honor of Veterans and Veterans Day, which we celebrated last Tuesday. "My grandparents emigrated from Japan to labor in the sugarcane fields of Hawaii over a hundred years ago. My mother was six months pregnant with her first child, my eldest brother, when the Japanese bombed Pearl Harbor. When nothing is all you can do. I came home from high school and told Uncle Hito, 'Some people said the Jews were never rounded up and killed during World War Two.' 'People like that,' he said, 'they all bullshit.' 'How would you know?' I asked the eighth grade graduate, truck driver for the sugarcane plantation, the sloppy, weakened drunk. I was there, driving one truck for the engineering unit. You've never seen such suffering. Their wrists were so skinny, and they're so weak, they just fall down and lie on the ground. Their mouth was moving, but no can make sound, like there was going to make it right there in front of us, and we no can do nothing for them. We try, give them chocolate, they fight and eat the paper and all, and then throw up. We try, give them water, they throw up. We had to leave them there, in the road. We give them our blankets, but we had to go. We no can do nothing for them, nothing. And they tell us, 'Thank you. Thank you.'" In English, 'thank you.' He cried and cried."
Thank you. Floor is still open. If anybody wishes to speak, please raise your hand.
Well, I'm gonna need a tissue first. That was very moving, so thank you, Mayor. Appreciate that.
Dave Blain, you want to speak? I was messing with you. Anyone else? Okay, well, thank you very much, everybody. Any comments from the council? Okay. We're gonna move on to item seven. Appointments. We have three appointments this evening, two to the Arts Commission and one to the Municipal Tree Commission. They're all reappointments. And so we'll start off with Councilmember Boger.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, in the interest of time, I'd like to do them all as a consent calendar with no objection from the council.
Counsel, any objections, a consent?
No objection.
Okay. Fair enough. Okay, Councilmember Boger, would you like to make a motion for your two candidates?
Make a motion. Now, I'll just do it for the Arts Commission, and then Councilmember Jones can do it for the Tree Commission.
Yep.
So I make, I make a motion to reappoint Ms. Lindsay Jones and Ms. Luanne Swam for reappointment to the Arts Commission.
Thank you. And Councilmember Ellis?
I make a motion to, to reappoint Morgan Jones to the Municipal, Municipal Tree Commission.
Second.
Thank you very much, counsel. I have a motion by, I have a motion to reappoint Ms. Lindsay Jones and Luanne Swam to the Arts Commission and Morgan Jones to the Municipal Tree Commission. Motions were made by Councilmember Boger and Councilmember Ellis by the respective commission liaisons, and both were seconded by the council president. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Reappointment, Ms. Lindsay Jones, Luanne Swam, and Morgan Jones carries six zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, council members. And we'll go to item eight, recognitions. This evening, we have no recognitions. Item number nine, proclamations. This evening, we have no proclamations. And that takes us to item ten, presentations. And we actually have two presentations this evening. We have a Marina Commission report, and we have a report from our financial auditor for the city. So we'll start with the Marina Commission. Mr. Josh Argentino, good evening, sir.
Good evening. How are you?
Marina Commission Chair. We're doing well. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. So, just like last year, this is very similar to what I presented. Couple changes. So this goes over our membership requirements. I'll skip through that. You guys can check that out. Do you guys get copies of this at the, can you like?
Online. We should have it available.
So our members this year are very active. Almost everybody shows up to every meeting, which is great. Got some really good members. We got some really good ideas that come in. This presentation is essentially required by the city code, so we're supposed to give the strategic direction of the enterprise fund. We're supposed to talk about capital projects and rate structure coordination. We're supposed to consider budget, budgets and timing and implementation of said budgets. We're supposed to establish and monitor the operational goals and objectives. We're also to determine rates and charges. So this talks about the, where to find a section twenty-five article and how to replenish the depleted reserves. One of the big things that we, that I brought up last year and also can bring up this year is dredging is extremely needed in that marina. As far as grant opportunities, there was a seven hundred eighty-five thousand dollar grant in two thousand twenty-two when the dredging was done last. Steve just got us forty thousand dollars in grants last year for the Pier Five redecking, and he's working on Pier Three this year. So our rate structure now, the price just increased for two thousand twenty-six to seventy-two dollars a foot for two thousand twenty-six contracts. In two thousand twenty-four, we were still doing really good at sixty-eight dollars per registration foot. Two thousand twenty-five went to seventy. This is the last price increase that was voted on. The commission supported implementation of the legislatively mandated rate increases to meet the annual price increases for operating capital costs. It was back in two thousand twenty-four when this was voted on. So a couple of things that are still on the budget for coming up is going to be removable stairs for fuel dock office. This is kind of important because the marina seems to flood out every other day. Dock box replacement, there's a lot of, those dock boxes have to be fifteen, twenty years old, I would guess. There's several that are damaged and missing. Some have been moved to other slips to make up for the ones that are missing. There's only two dead boats in the marina, which is good. Steve has done a great job on kicking out the bums and getting everybody to pay. The bulkhead deterioration of Southeast Corner Marina by the fuel dock is also a big problem. That has been being talked about for several years now. As far as I know, the engineering is being implemented for that, but I don't think it's gone much further. Dredging is an immediate need. You go down there at low tide and you walk the docks, you can see six inches to a foot of water under the docks, and it's, it's pretty, pretty shallow. The only deep spot is, you know, coming in marina right in front of fuel dock, it's twelve foot deep there, runs the channel ostensibly straight through the marina. Everything on the far sides is kind of shallow. So, one of the big things that I put is the first thing to talk about under capital projects is the entry gates on the docks. I'm sure everybody here knows about what happened to me and my boat in April. And we've been talking about this prior to that issue, and then that issue kind of really exacerbated why we need the gates. Since that issue, in the Marina Commission meeting, we've talked about different ways to design the gates and budgeting for the gates. We think that the gates can be had for under two thousand dollars apiece, is our opinion. And you need six gates, so that's approximately twelve thousand dollars. The dredging cost is going to be very expensive, and we hope to obtain a grant for that, to do that. But part of the problem with the overall dredging is where to put these materials. There's this thing called the DMP site. The DMP site apparently requires engineering to be able to put the fill material there, and apparently that's being worked on now. I don't know what stage it's in. Piling and decking replacement, Pier Three is definitely in need of a decking replacement. We're hoping to get that covered with a grant this year. The bulkhead deterioration, that's another problem that's kind of been rearing its ugly head lately with the high tides. The electric submeters, there's a lot that aren't working. Parking lot resurfacing, this, the parking lot, I'm not sure how old that is. I can't remember the last time I, I've seen it paved, but it's definitely deteriorating. They patch it and puddles everywhere, but I think that once the bulkhead gets fixed, they'd be able to fix the parking lot after that. You wouldn't want to tear up the parking lot and then have to fix the bulkhead. So, one issue that was brought up in our commission meetings was the lighting for the Water Street Boat Ramp. If you've been down there at night, there is no lighting, and it's very dark in the parking lot. But at the same time, there's also houses right across the street. So, you don't want those, you don't want that parking lot lit up twenty-four-seven because those houses are going to be pretty irritated. We were thinking in the commission, we have been talking about what to do for that. We're thinking motion activated lights or lights that turn off after a certain period of time or lights that only stay on for a certain period of time. There's something so when somebody's using the parking lot or using the boat ramp, that it's lit. The no wake zone buoys are also kind of important. I spend a lot of time in the marina at all hours of the day and night, and I see people rip through there, just about on plane, you know, waking everybody's boats, and that can tear things up. The argument between the no wake zone buoy and a six mile an hour buoy is some boats can do six mile an hour and still throw a wake. So, right now, there's six mile an hour buoys out there that essentially say, yeah, I can do up to six miles an hour and doesn't say no wake. But we're trying to get no wake buoys in there so that it can be enforced. DNR told us that it is enforceable if the buoys are there. It is not enforceable if the buoys are not there. So, the hours at the fuel dock, we'd like to extend them from five PM to six PM in season. The state of the marina, currently there's two full-time and one part-time. These three-season employees seem to do pretty well in the summertime. They're going to continue to seek grant funding. Looking for the Pier Three redecking because Pier Five just got done. Might flip-flop that. One of the big things why the marina isn't completely full now is we don't have a great customer experience. One, because of, we don't have Wi-Fi, we don't have security gates, we don't have deep water, we don't have parking. Parking lot is not ours. It's everybody's, and it's very hard to find parking there in summertime. One of the things that we're going to try to improve on our customer experience is the Wi-Fi coming from Think Big. So, last I heard, they were coming down close to the park within about two blocks. So, they still say they're approximately two years out from getting anything at the park. And the gates, we're gonna ask for them to be added to the budget for two thousand twenty-seven as security's becoming an issue down there. So, this talks about the other rates of the marinas in the, in the area and where we are in comparison. The Tidewater Marina, they're a hundred seventy-five dollars a foot, annual's a hundred sixty-five dollars a foot. You get Wi-Fi, you get guaranteed parking, you get gate access, you get winter security, and you get two haulouts per season. Havde Grace Marina, which is Water Street Marina, you get floating docks, you get guaranteed parking, Wi-Fi. Bulk Pond Marina, same thing, you get guaranteed parking, you get floating docks, you get grill access and Wi-Fi. The Penns Beach Marina, right next to the lighthouse, beautiful view of the fireworks. They got a pool, they got guaranteed parking, they got floating docks, and they got Wi-Fi. So, out of all these, we are definitely still the cheapest, but we are the cheapest because we don't have these things. Right now, our annual slip rate is seventy-two dollars a foot for two thousand twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five is seventy dollars a foot, we're ten dollars each time you launch your boat unless you have a annual slip holder and it's free. Transient slips, so if somebody comes in from out of state and they want to stay the nights, dollar fifty a foot. There, the limits to our rates include no Wi-Fi, we have no land storage, we have no security, we have no floating docks, and we don't have dedicated parking. If the rates go up much more, slip holders may end up going to another marina to pay for, a little more for amenities. There's also very minimal water depth for large boats. The commission recommends no further rate increase. Have any questions, comments, or concerns?
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Argentino?
Sir. Hey, Josh. First of all, thanks for the presentation. I know that puts, it takes an effort to actually do so. A few things that stood out to me, and, and I know other council members, too. Is there, is there, has there ever been a pilot program for any parking passes for slip owners?
Long time ago. Now, this would have to go back to the boys who started the Marina Commission, which are still, a few still on the commission that started it. Apparently, the marina is not part of the parking lot. The parking lot and the marina are two separate entities. The marina is owned by the city, but the parking lot's owned by the city, but it's two separate funds. So, the parking lot, we can't, we have no control over what happens in the parking lot whatsoever, apparently. I don't have the time to research the codes and go way back in the thirty years, but I've been told, because I brought this up, too, like, why can't, if you have a boat slip here, why can't you have a dedicated parking pass to get down here? And I was told because the marina itself is a separate entity from the parking lot. There's also some things that contradict themselves on our rule sheet as well. So, if you get online, you can look at the, the marina rules. One of the rules is no overnight sleeping in the parking lot, but we don't own the park, but the Marina Commission has no control over the parking lot. So, that makes me think that somewhere along the lines, the Marina Commission did have control over that parking lot. Now, if you guys could find a way to give us parking passes, I'd love you all. Because, you know, the Fourth of July weekend, you basically got to go down there and grab your spot a couple of days beforehand, park a vehicle down there, and then park something else up the street and walk down. So, that's a, that would be an awesome thing to get parking passes down there, and that would, you know, make the marina more valuable to people. One thing that was brought up at the last Marina Commission meeting is there's a lot of commercial fishermen down there that weren't allowed to get into the marina on the last run they had. I want to say that run was in September. There's some big run that shut down half the city, and apparently the fishermen were pretty irritated, irritated enough to come say something at the commission meeting at the last one. And that's when we, you know, we had no control over the parking lot kind of thing. So, they were upset. They paid for a slip, they can't even drive down into the parking lot to get to their boat, and they're, you know, commercial fishermen, that's what they do for a living. So, that is an issue. I'd love to, you know, learn more about that and see if that is a possibility to get a parking permit.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Boger?
So, in the past year, there has been a automated means of paying for your launch.
Yes.
Can you talk a little bit about that?
It's working out great. It is, it's a great system. Oh, I have to pull the numbers. Of course, you may know, but I think it's already paid for itself pretty much for the install so far. I think in the first year, it's paid for its operating costs and the install, and now everything's going to be profit from here on out. But a lot of people have been using it, and they've been paying more attention to it. We also put up more signage down there. I don't know if you've been down there recently, but if you, if you look, we have, as soon as you pull around at the boat ramp, the kiosk is right there, so you can't miss it. There's also a big sign on the fence. Yep. So, there's.
Who owns that fence? Does the city own that fence, or does Clark own that fence?
So, Steve told me the city owns it.
It's gotten a couple hits lately.
Yeah. I heard, now, word on the street is the fence came from Steve Gamatorre's house back in the day when the city purchased the house. That's what I was told. I don't know if it's true, but it looks like the same fence.
So, is there any, like, numbers, like, or?
So, the numbers that I pulled last, now, this is me looking back at my notes, I, you know, or took, I looked at all my agenda notes from the last year, and I want to say first three weeks that it was in operation, it made fifteen hundred bucks.
Josh, if I can introduce that.
Yes.
So, the pay stations started, I think, around September last year, October. So, it's been a good year where we, you know, installed the pay stations. So, I can provide you in terms of the, it goes to a certain revenue account, so we know in terms of what the pay stations are. I mean, seasonal, obviously, there's good months, especially during the summer season. That's information I can pull for you guys if you need those information.
Yeah, I just would like to know, you know, given the two thousand dollars per gate, if it could potentially pay for that?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
In line. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I would suggest getting a copy of the budget that he gives every meeting. He's got a really, really nice two-page, three-page budget. He does a really good job with setting that up, and.
This is a great line in terms of our, you know, budget season for next year. So, it's around the corner in December, so I'm sure we'll hear about it.
Yep. He's a, he's got it all there, and the marina's actually doing really well. Fuel sales are down, but people haven't been using their boats as much. But that seems to be about the only issue that we've had was fuel sales being down, from what I remember.
Any other questions or comments? Josh, thank you very much for your presentation.
No problem.
We appreciate it. Appreciate your time, and thanks for all your work on the commission.
Thank you. Have a good night. Have Thanksgiving.
Okay, next presentation. I'd like to call forward Mr. Nate Schwartz, who's with our finance, he's going to give the city's two thousand twenty-five financial statement report, and he's with Zelenkovsky and Axelrod. Good to see you again, sir.
Good to see you, sir. Let me hand out the hard copies of the statements.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you. Yeah, do you have another one? Councilmember Ellis needs one. All right, Mr. Schwartz, thank you.
All right. You guys have five minutes to review that sixty-eight page document, but, no, I'd like to thank the mayor and council for having me down again to do the presentation. I'd like to start off by thanking Abdul and his staff. Obviously, with the transition from George to Abdul, usually when you switch finance directors, it's challenging, to say the least. This audit went incredibly smoothly. Abdul and his staff provided all the information again in a timely fashion. We sent out the request early, everything was ready, sent to us electronically, samples were pulled in advance, so I'd like to thank him again for a very efficient audit. No material misstatements, everything went smooth. I wanted to start, I'll go over, we have some required communications that I have to go over year with council. So, as I said, we completed our audit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards in the United States of America, along with government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States of America. Please announce again, we issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, the highest level of assurance that we can give on financial statements, so no modifications to your opinion this year. We were able to conduct our audit consistent with the planned time and scope that we had communicated in our engagement letter. Our firm and all of our staff and anyone with us followed all ethical requirements related to independence. The significant accounting policies of the city are noted in note one of the financial statements, so the notes to the financial statement, there were no significant changes year over year on those. There were no significant or unusual transactions that require communication to council. We were not aware of any significant fraud or instances of fraud that require communication to council. We encountered no significant difficulties when performing our audit. There were no significant, I said it already, or material misstatements that were required to communicate to council. And during the course of the audit, we had no disagreements with management concerning our financial or accounting records or policies. So, I usually do just a real quick, brief, real brief highlight. Again, your general fund this year did increase fund balance slightly, so you have a very healthy fund balance within the general fund. So, you spent a good portion of your ARPA funds this year. I think it was five point some million. We have about a million left as of June thirtieth, which are obviously already obligated and maybe spent by this point. I'm not a hundred percent sure. So, that's going well. I did want to go over this year, I tried to pick out one thing. Both of your pension plans are extremely well-funded. Your civilian plan, I call it the civilian plan, is ninety-six percent funded. The police pension plan, slightly less, seventy-seven percent, still good, though, for an average of a local government. So, you guys are doing well on funding both of the plans. The OPEB's still on a pay-as-you-go, typical, I go over it every year, but it's typical of most municipalities. I have two or three out of all my clients that actually have those funded. Again, if you ever run into a bunch of spare money laying around, good policy to fund one of those because you get to use a different discount rate, which will inevitably lower your liability that we're reporting on the statements. However, unlikely that you're going to have a pot of money to fund that. So, again, something that if you ever want to do, it will definitely help your liability reduce. So, do you guys have any questions for me, or?
Any questions so far? Questions?
I will say, if you guys have any questions, Abdul obviously can answer them, but if not, he has direct access to me. You can email me at any time, and I'll get back to you on them.
I just want to say that I appreciate the kind words about our director, Mr. Abdi over there. Like I said, George was here for almost nineteen years. So, no, we're very proud of our finance department and the leadership that's on, that has now, and thank you for just working with us and the smooth transition here, and we're very good that everything, everything's been panning out, and our funds are, you know, looking good with the funding. And again, we appreciate your company. Been with us for nine years now? Eight years?
It's been ten.
Ten years.
It's been ten. Wow. Okay, great. I knew, I knew. I knew, I knew when I became mayor in two thousand fifteen, we, we switched up Oz and Sherpas right away and that, but like I said, we've been great to deal, uh, great to work with, and, uh, we appreciate it. It's good to see you. Thank you for being.
Yeah, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, Nate. Do appreciate it.
Okay.
Just be sure to thank your team on a great, uh, successful, uh, audit, branch audit, uh, and Aaron and.
One week from due, so she did not make it down to this.
Uh, we'll let it slide this time. It's no problem.
Thank you, Nate.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Have a good evening. Okay, we're going to go to, uh, item eleven, resolutions. This evening we have one resolution and counter resolution. I'll hand that off to Councilmember Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I move to introduce a counter resolution concerning approving a license agreement for a replacement sign at six twenty-two South Union Avenue. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Schnegus. This is a motion to introduce a counter resolution. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to introduce counter resolution carries six zero and affirmative. This is going to be a resolution by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace, Maryland pursuant to the local government article of the annotated, annotated code of Maryland in sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the city charter for approval of a license agreement for a replacement sign at six twenty-two South Union Avenue on City Right-Away. This will be known as counter resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen, two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen. Council, I have a motion to adopt two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen.
So moved.
Second. A motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Boger. Questions or comments? We'll do a roll call vote. Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
Councilmember Schnegus?
Yes.
Councilmember Boger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and the affirmative, city council, counter resolution two thousand twenty-five dash eighteen is adopted. We'll go to item twelve, ordinances. This evening we have ordinance twelve eleven, one-two-one-one on second reading. Uh, Council President?
Mr. Mayor, council citizens all, I move to introduce ordinance number one-two-one-one concerning amending chapter sixty-one elections for second reading and adoption.
Council, I have a motion by the Council President. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schnegus. Same motion to introduce ordinance twelve eleven on second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction of this ordinance? All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ordinance twelve eleven is an ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace, Maryland, adopted pursuant to the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution. The local government article of the annotated code of Maryland in sections thirty-three and thirty-four of the Haverty Grace City Charter to amend chapter sixty-one elections. Council, do I have a motion to adopt twelve eleven on second reading?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Schnegus, seconded by Councilmember Jones. Any questions or comments? Sir?
Mr. Mayor, I do have several amendments to make, and I move, uh, to make all these as one whole. Each council member is included, uh, with the packet, um, the list of the amendments from the administration and the attorney. And I'll read these out individually. Uh, amendment number one, page two, line forty-six and forty-seven, after the word registration, delete the words "list maintained by Harford County" and replace with "established by the Maryland Code Election Law subsection three dash four zero three." Second amendment is, page two, line fifty-one, after the word "mail," add the words "pursuant to procedures adopted by the board." Amendment number three, page two, line sixty-five, delete the word "Harford" and replace with "the before county." Amendment number four, page two, line sixty-five, after "county," add the words "in accordance with Maryland Code Election Law subsection three dash four zero three." Amendment number five, page two, line sixty-six, after the word "but," add the words "the board." After, uh, sorry, amendment number six, page two, line sixty-six, after the words "notify the," remove the word "Harford." Amendment number seven, page three, line eighty-five, remove the words "Harford County Board of Elections" and replace with "city staff and city attorney." Amendment number eight, page three, line ninety, delete the words "county and." Amendment number nine, page three, line one oh one, after the words "Director of Administration," delete the words "pending review by the Board of Elections Supervisors and/or Harford County Board of Elections." Now, this is my motion, and it's based on the recommendation of the city attorney administration with consulting our, um, uh, head local Board of Elections.
Council? I have a motion by the Council President on the aforementioned amendments to this ordinance. Is there a second to these amendments?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Jones. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Council President's amendments to ordinance twelve eleven are approved six zero and affirmative. We are back under the question on the final adoption of ordinance twelve eleven. Any other further questions or comments before the roll call vote? Roll call vote on ordinance twelve eleven, Councilmember Schnegus?
Yes.
Councilmember Boger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Council, Frank Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer?
Yes.
By roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, city council ordinance twelve eleven is adopted on second reading. Item B, ordinance twelve twelve, second reading. Councilmember Ellis?
Yes, I move to introduce an ordinance number twelve twelve concerning approving budget amendment twenty twenty-five dash oh three for living shoreline maintenance in this second reading.
Second.
Council, I have a motion by Councilmember Ellis. I have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schnegus. This is a motion, this is a motion introduced ordinance twelve twelve on the second reading. Questions or comments on the introduction? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion introduced ordinance twelve twelve on second reading carries six zero and affirmative. Twelve twelve is an ordinance by the mayor and city council of Haverty Grace by the authority of Article eleven E of the Maryland Constitution, the local government article of the annotated code of Maryland and section thirty-seven of Haverty Grace City Charter for the purpose of amending the city budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six to address additional allocation of funds for the city of Haverty Grace for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six. Council, I have a motion to adopt on second reading. To move.
Second.
Motion by the Council President and seconded by Councilmember.
Jones.
Yes. Questions or comments? Roll call vote, Councilmember Boger?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Yes.
Councilmember Ellis?
Yes.
Council President?
Yes.
Councilmember Boyer? Councilmember Schnegus?
Yes.
A roll call vote of six zero and affirmative, city council ordinance twelve twelve, one-two-one-two is adopted on second reading. Thank you, council. We will move on, on the agenda to item thirteen, which is old business. There has, there was a tabled, uh, special event from last meeting. Is there a motion to untable?
I move to untable.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones. Second by the Council President. All those in favor of the untabling say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion to untable the special event on the Arts Wine and Jazz and Soul Festival fundraiser for August eighth. Carries six zero and affirmative. We now have an untabled special event, and the floor is open. Any comment, sir?
Uh, so the, uh, the group that's putting on the event, um, the Arts Wine Jazz and Soul Festival, um, the issue was parking at the Maritime Museum. They have worked out the parking issue with Maritime Museum. They're going to have an attendant there. So, uh, we, we feel that, that, uh, requiring an attendant at every single event down at the park is a little bit onerous. Like, small events like the one coming up future here, the Sea of Remembrance Walk, they're not even going to have enough people to, to warrant, uh, putting an attendant up there. We think we could take each of these case-by-case basis, and, uh, we think we've reached, reached an amicable agreement with the, uh, the group that's putting this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Council President, and Councilmember Schnegus.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, move to change the drop-off and pickup location from the Harford County School District buses that transport citizens from the Star Center parking lot for the safety purposes. And the move would be from Alliance and Concord Street to Lewis and Concord Street. It's one block up. The safety issue is, is that it's right near the entrance, and it's right in the residential area. So it's makes for very crowded, um, streets, and there's not a lot of safety for turning with, um, pedestrians walking across the street, and I just think it would be a much safer location for drop-off. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mayor?
Yes.
Is, is this part, is this a separate motion, or are you? Because we have, are we just having a discussion on the, um, the parking, or do we need to motion?
I made a motion.
Oh, you made a motion. I apologize. I apologize. So, all right. So we have to go back. I'm sorry. My apologies. I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Schnegus. Is there a second to your motion?
Did everyone see the map?
I'll second it.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Hold on one second. I have a motion by Councilmember Schnegus, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Questions or comments?
So, so.
For Boger.
Yeah, so, thank you, Mayor. So, when, uh, the bus comes down, uh, Lewis and tees into Concord, the assumption is that they'll make a left-hand turn?
Yes.
And then, okay, then they'll safely be able to navigate back around, uh, up the street and then back to the Star Center, right?
That's correct.
Okay, no, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Boger. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Schnegus, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. No more further question or comments. All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed say nay. Motion approves, or the amendment is approved six zero and affirmative. Okay, so we're back on, um, the question of the special event, right? Any other further comments on the Arts Wine Jazz and Soul Festival fundraiser for August eighth, two thousand twenty-six? Are we ready to vote on it?
Yep, we're good.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve this event?
So moved.
Second.
Second by, motion by Councilmember Boger, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The Arts Wine Jazz and Soul Festival fundraiser, August eighth, two thousand twenty-six, from eleven AM to six PM at Concord Point Park, is approved six zero and affirmative. Thank you very much, council, and we will go to new business, and we have a few events coming up, and we'll hand that off to Dr. Ritchie, Director of Administration.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, for your consideration, this evening we have three special events. One of them, you heard commented on earlier during citizen comments, that one was the Christmas at the Park on December twenty-third from six PM to eight PM at Tidings Memorial Park. We have the Haverty Grace Ice Festival, February twenty-first, twenty twenty-six, uh, from two PM to seven PM. And that has the standard footprint that we've done in years past, uh, at downtown and at the Star Center. And then special event number three is the Sea of Remembrance Walk on May thirtieth, uh, from ten AM to twelve PM at Concord Point Park. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Ritchie, Council President. How would you like to approach these events?
Dr. Ritchie, do you believe that we need, um, specific conversation on the Christmas in Park, at the park?
So the Christmas, uh, the Christmas at the Park event has made two requests that have not come before this council in the past. There are requests for, uh, some city assets, one being two fire pits that the Department of Public Works has that the city uses during city sponsor, or city, city-sponsored events, but a, uh, another entity hasn't requested, hasn't requested the council's approval for use of those yet. And they are also requesting use of the, uh, light tower that DPW has. I have had email conversations with the event organizer related to this. They have reached out to the hose company and gotten some advice on fire safety. They will have, uh, people staffing the fire pits with fire extinguishers. Public Works is able to create, they have some portable concrete block that they're able to create, um, a safe place in Tidings Park for both fire pits, so it doesn't damage the grass, nothing's going to catch on fire. And the light tower is currently available, uh, but the event organizers do understand that if a water main breaks or something like that, DPW is coming up and taking that light tower and going to go and address the water main break. But those are just, those are the only two things that have not come before this council before. Thank you.
Then, Mr. Mayor, then with those considerations, without objection to council, I'd like to do them all as a consent calendar.
Council, any objection to consent calendar?
I object, as I would like to make a motion regarding the fire pits.
So you want to take each event separately then?
Yes, because I would like to discuss the fire pits further.
Okay, that's fine. So what we'll do is, uh, since there's objection, that's fine. We'll do each event one at a time. Uh, item one. Do I have a motion to approve Christmas at the Park on December twenty-third?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Boger, seconded by Councilmember.
Second by me.
Who seconded it?
Casey.
Second, thank you. Councilmember Boyer? Questions or comments?
Comments, um. I know that the purpose for the fires is to keep people warm, but also people are bringing chairs and won't necessarily be gathering around the fires. My concern is that it is, um, a safety issue, and it's creating, um, kind of a deficit to the park in the area with the fire pits. So I move that we eliminate the opportunity for the fire pits, but approve the event.
Council, I have a motion on the floor by Councilmember Schnegus. This is a motion to remove the fire pits from the event application. Is there a second? Take, motion fails for lack of a second. We're still on the floor for Christmas at the Park, December twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. We have a motion by Councilmember Boger, seconded by Councilmember Boyer. Any further questions or comments? Sir?
Just, just one, and, and I know the event planner is here. I, I, when I read the application, it didn't specify on the ground or inside the barbecue pits. I, I don't really, does anyone know where the fire is going to, is going to be, on the, in the barbecue pit?
So the fire, if you look at the, uh, there's a map in your event application, and there's some little kind of like asterisks or little stars that are drawn on there. That's the general area where they intend to put the fire pits. There are only two fire pits, um, that we have that would be available to them. Uh, but they, they're, uh, so they're not the barbecue, they're not like in the barbecue grills. They, they are, uh, wood burning kind of half-barrel fire pit, uh, type, type devices that we use.
But it's contained on the ground?
Correct.
They'll be in a half-barrel, this is what the DPW has, they're, they're half-barrels with bottoms.
Oh, okay.
And they're, they'll be put up on center blocks, so they don't scorch the grass.
Right, right, okay.
That's what, I'm assuming that's where they're going to be, because that's what we do.
That's my understanding, yes.
And, and, and I didn't see in the packet whether there was any kind of fire mitigation, uh, apparatuses, like.
So in conversation that I, that I had via email with the event organizers, they're going to have a person stationed at each fire pit, and they, those people will have fire extinguishers with them in case there is a need for those.
Thank you, Dr. Ritchie. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Boyer?
First, I'm going to apologize. I'm going to talk kind of in a weird way, uh, having asthma attack. So I've been to this event for the past couple of years, and I can honestly tell you, it is very well organized. There is a large amount of volunteers doing a variety of things. It is a very, um, it's a joyous group of people, but, um, a well-behaved group of people at the same time. So I, I really have no fear that, um, everything will be, uh, at the same time. So, I really have no fear that everything will be more than adequately patrolled and make sure that everything is more than adequately safe. And I want to highly encourage everyone to come out. And it's just so nice to sit there, as cold as it is, and it is a very cold experience, but to sit there and just be surrounded by other people from our community, singing Christmas songs, and just seeing the happiness of all the, of just everybody there, and the community and camaraderie of it. It's just a great event, and I want to encourage you guys to participate in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other further questions or comments? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Christmas in the Park for December 23rd, 2025, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Tidings Memorial Park. It's approved, six zero and affirmative. Thank you, Council. Item two, Haverty Grace Ice Festival, February 21st, 2026. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Booger, seconded by the Council President. Questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Ice Festival is approved, six zero and affirmative. Sea of Remembrance Walk, May 30th, 2026. I have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Council President. Question or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Sea of Remembrance Walk for May 30th, 2026, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. at Concord Point Park is approved, six, zero, and affirmative. Thank you, Council. Item fifteen, Director's Reports. Dr. Ritchie?
Thank you, Mayor, Council, colleagues, citizens. So, firstly, thank you to the City Council for approving ordinances 1211 and 1212. I appreciate that. So, there are many things to do over at the Star Center the next couple of weeks, and I'd like to review them with you. So, the Great Haverty Grace Oyster Feast is this Saturday evening from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. It is almost sold out. There are a handful of tickets available, so order them now if you would like to attend that. Remember, a portion of your ticket sales goes to a participating Haverty Grace nonprofit of your choice. When you go to checkout online through our Eventbrite page, it will give you a drop-down list, and you can just simply select which nonprofit you would like the proceeds to go to, and I will read that list of nonprofits. So, we have the Annual Thanksgiving Dinner, Boys and Girls Clubs of Hartford and Cecil Counties, Celebrate the Fourth Foundation, Concord Point Lighthouse, Haverty Grace Recreation Committee, Haverty Grace Decoy Museum, Haverty Grace Arts Commission, Haverty Grace Green Team, Haverty Grace Youth Sailing Commission, or I'm sorry, Haverty Grace Youth Commission, Haverty Grace Youth, Haverty Grace Youth Sailing Program, there we go, Joseph L. Davis American Legion Post Number 47, Lockhouse Museum, Rogue Swan Theater Company, Seroptimists of Haverty Grace, Tidewater Players, and Visit Hartford. Chris Pinella is performing Christmas hits and all-time classics by Candlelight with a 12-piece orchestra on Friday, November 28th at 8:00 p.m. at the Star Center. Vitality is performing the following night at 8:00 p.m. on the 29th, and Vitality is hailed as one of the most unique and innovative illusionists in the world, and they're performing right here in Haverty Grace at our Star Center. Reminder, 98 Degrees is performing at the Star Center on December 4th. All the good tickets are largely gone at this point. We do have some Tier One and Tier Two tickets remaining. Please remember that going through the Star Center website, starcentermd.com, is the only way to ensure you're receiving authentic Star Center event tickets. We do not sell tickets on reseller sites, so if you are purchasing them on a reseller site, you are buying them at your own risk. We have had to turn people away because they have bought fake tickets on some of those sites. So, you're duly warned. Please just buy them from us. So, mark your calendars for December 5th at 6:00 p.m. I have it on good authority that Santa and Mrs. Claus are coming to town here in Haverty Grace. The official Mrs., the Mrs. Claus will be joining Santa. She is so excited to come down. She's just been, just talking his ear off about it the whole, for the last week. It's, it's going to be a wonderful time. They're looking forward to it. They're going to participate in the parade. They're going to light the big, beautiful Christmas tree with the mayor, and then they'll retire to Santa Land to hear all of the wishes from all the good boys and girls here in Haverty Grace. There are many other events happening in our beautiful city, and you can find out all about them at explorehavertygrace.com. Before we, or before I finish my comments, I do want to congratulate Abdul, you and your team, on a successful audit, being your first year in the driver's seat. Good work. Proud of you. Thank you for all the hard work. I know Abdul had several late nights. I personally saw him here. And lastly, I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, and I would like to thank all the wonderful volunteers that we have in our city who are going to be spending their Thanksgivings making sure other people have a Thanksgiving dinner to eat. I think that's absolutely wonderful, and your efforts are greatly appreciated. And that concludes my comments for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update, Dr. Ritchie, and we're going to go to our Director of Planning, Mr. Goins.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. So, just a reminder about GIS Day, this Wednesday, November 19th. We're going to have an open house here in Council Chambers from 12:30 to 3:30. Refreshments will be provided, so please stop by, learn about GIS. As I mentioned a few council meetings ago, we launched our GIS Hub. We have a lot of great interactive maps, a lot of good information we're pushing out to the public, so come and learn about what we're doing about GIS here in Haverty Grace. In terms of our meetings this month, we have our Planning Commission meeting this Thursday. We just have one item. It's a three-lot subdivision on South Washington Street. And for the Board of Appeals, at the November 7th hearing, we had two conditional use petitions, one for a hotel, one for a gas station. Those items were continued for additional information to be provided by the applicants. And so, as of right now, we don't know if that's going to be going on the December agenda, so we'll probably know by this Wednesday. So, if anyone's interested in that hearing, please check the city's website, probably on Thursday. If you're adjacent property owner, you will receive notification in the mail, but if you're not adjacent property owner, definitely check with us. We can let you know if that's going to be a hearing on, which will be December 4th. If not, it may go in January or potentially February. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Goins? Thank you very much, sir. Thanks for the update. And we're going to go to Ms. Bridget Johnson, our Director of Economic Development and Tourism. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens in the audience and at home. EDAB will meet this Wednesday, September 19th, four o'clock p.m. here in Council Chambers. This month, we have Pace Putlin. He is the owner of the Old Golds Bakery Building on Washington Street. He will give us an update on the renovation taking place on the property, and give us an update when Newberry Bakery is expected to open, and we are hoping that will be the spring of 2026, but we are happy to have him present to us. We also have a second presenter this month at EDAB, and that's Mr. Steve Horn. He's with the Aberdeen Economic Development Commission. Yes, Aberdeen is visiting us. They'll give us an update on some of the projects currently taking place in the city of Aberdeen and particularly on their Main Street. We work closely, I refer to them sometime as our sister city, because we have similar interests, and a lot of it has to do with our location here along the Route 40 corridor. So, sometimes when Aberdeen has a, a business that's looking for a space to rent or buy, and they cannot accommodate them, they send them to Haverty Grace and vice versa. So, we're looking forward to hearing their report as well. EDAB, of course, is open to the public, so again, it's four o'clock p.m. here in Council Chambers. Excuse me, if you would like to hear either one of those guest speakers. We have a new employee in the Department of Economic Development and Tourism. Her name is Marcia Hines. She is our part-time Main Street and Tourism Coordinator. She started on November 12th. She is at day four. She keeps returning, so we think she likes it here with us. We are certainly enjoying her, and we have extended an offer to someone, and I'll give additional information on that person in the near future, because they do not start until the beginning of January 2026. Lori is away at the Annual Maryland Tourism Conference until Thursday, so when she returns, it's full speed ahead with Holly Jolly Days of planning, and we've already been working on that for about a month. So, on the Explore Haverty Grace website, we added a tab called Holly Jolly Days. So, we'll give you all of the information, starting from Thanksgiving on until the end of December. So, it'll have all of those events that Chris was just speaking about, the time and locations. We are bringing back the horse-drawn carriage rides this year, along with a host of other things. So, it's there. Just click on the date. We want to continue to push that out. We have some really good things in store this year. We're bringing back the Holly Jolly Village. It'll be located at the foot of Pennington Avenue, so please continue to go to explorehavertygrace.com to receive all of your information. So, are there any questions?
Any questions, Council?
All righty. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah.
And we're going to go back to our Director of Finance. Good evening, Mr. Abdi.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers and also citizens of Haverty Grace, I'll be going over the financial condition of our three funds, starting with the General Fund. The fund balance currently stands at eight million, 370,700, which is down since my last reporting, 433,100. In terms of the beginning balance, it has not changed and currently stands at 2,782,200. In terms of revenues, it is up since the last reporting, up 408,400. To date, revenues are 15,028,900. In terms of the expenditure side, it is up since the last reporting, 841,500. To date, expenditures are standing at 9,084,000. Onto the Water and Turor Fund, the current fund balance is up since the last reporting, 1,095,200. Fund balance currently stands at 6,759,800. Beginning fund balance has not changed. It currently stands at 4,703,500. Revenues are up since the last reporting, 1,451,600. To date, revenues stand at 5,702,000. In terms of expenditures, they are up 356,400. Expenses to date is 3,645,700. Finally, the Marina Fund currently stands up at 8,900,600, which is up 13,400 since my last reporting. Beginning balance has not changed and currently stands at 946,700. Revenues are up 27,700 and currently stands at 228,500. In terms of expenses, they're up 14,300. Expenses to date for the Marina Fund stands at 284,600. And, and also in terms of the budget amendment, 1212, thank you for approving the budget amendment, 2026-03, and showing physical responsibility, stewardship for the city. And I also would like to reiterate in terms of Chris, the finance team, the finance team has done a great job in terms of the financial audit, working with Nate's team, so I do commend them in terms of, you know, working with the new finance director for this year. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, sir. Council, any questions for Mr. Abdi? Thank you very much, and again, great job of the audit. Thank you, Abdul.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Conway, Director of DPW.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council, colleagues, and guests. I'd like to thank Council for passing ordinance 1212, as we have two priority projects that we need to complete prior to the arrival of spring rains. DPW and our contractor are ahead of schedule on all the installation of our Christmas decorations, which gives us time to work out any bugs, and there will be quite a few new decorations added this year by John Allen and crew. All the lights are scheduled to be up and running next Wednesday evening, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Joe. Any questions for Mr. Conway? Thank you very much. Finally, we're going to go to Captain, or I'm sorry, Chief Crass.
Demoted again.
No problem, Councilmember Martin. Chief Crass, how are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing fantastic, Mayor, council members, citizens. We're, we were very fortunate a few weeks ago. We weren't fortunate that the accident happened, but we're fortunate that it was not as serious as it could have been. But Forty in Lewis, a young lady tried to race across and didn't really pay attention to the crosswalk there, and she tried to beat the signal, and she was struck by a vehicle. And so, luckily, the injuries were very minor. But, you know, as the holidays are coming up, we tend to get a lot of foot traffic in our city, so I just wanted to make a pitch to everybody. So, for our walkers, please stay alert. Use the crosswalks. Don't cross in the middle of a block. If there's an automated signal, pay attention to that signal. And if you're walking during darkness, you know, it's getting darker earlier, so consider a bright-colored clothing or add something reflective if you're walking. And for our drivers, first of all, we all need to slow down. Stay alert for our pedestrians. Be prepared to stop at any time that there's a crosswalk, and then never pass a vehicle that stopped at a crosswalk. That is something that we see, and we make stops for, for that, you know, one driver in the front doing the right thing, and then there's another one that comes zipping by them, you know. So, anyway, and I will close with thanking our officers that will be working on Thanksgiving, and, you know, we appreciate them taking time away from their families to be here and keeping all of us safe. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Crass. Appreciate it. Any questions for the chief? Thank you, sir. We're going to go to business from the Council, and we're going to start off with comments from Councilmember Jones. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Council, everyone in the audience, and folks at home. First, I wanted to, last year, last week, there was an election in Aberdeen, and I just want to congratulate all of the colleagues, our colleagues who ran for the City Council, those who won, and those who also just made the effort to run. It takes a lot, and I think that they should be acknowledged as well. So, congratulations to all there. I wanted to comment that I heard the Motown event at the Star Center was fantastic. I wasn't able to make it, but I was thrilled that it was so successful, so I wanted to give a shout-out to Bambi and her team for another great and successful event. This, the Haverty Grace Youth Commission had four people who attended this past weekend at HBCU Fair in Springfield, Virginia, and youth said they had a fantastic experience. This was sponsored by the local NAACP. I mention this because, on a special note, 100% of the seniors who went to this trip got accepted to one or more colleges on the spot and also received partial or full scholarship. So, I hope that this is something that more commission members would participate in the future, and then just youth in general find this rewarding experience, especially trying to get into college, and it's really tough these days, and especially having the financial barriers. And then, lastly, I just want to say that I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday with family next week and safe travels. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jones, and we're going to go to comments from Councilmember Boyer. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Not sure what my voice is going to sound like. I want to first thank the American Legion and everyone who came out for the Veterans Day Parade. It's just one of those parades where you, as you walk and you are surrounded by people who are just living heroes surrounding all of us, and you see so many people within our community who have served in one way or another, and it's just probably one of the more surreal parades. So, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank them for putting it on, and I hope that it absolutely continues moving forward. I also want to report to everybody that the turkeys for the Haverty Grace Thanksgiving Community Dinner have been moved from the freezer today into the refrigerator. So, we have 110 turkeys currently defrosting at the Aberdeen Ironbirds Stadium. On Friday, we will be transporting them down, and we'll be sitting in a truck getting ready to be cooked down at the American Legion. Well, they'll start next Monday with the carving and everything, and then the big day, Thursday, we need people to show up to volunteer, and it's everything from packing the bags to delivering the bags, and, and we need a couple of people who are willing to help clean up, too. So, if there, you don't have anything to do on Thursday, you have someplace to be, and that's with your community. Up at the Community Center, we look forward to seeing you. Volunteers start there. Volunteers start there probably around 8:30, 9 o'clock, and we should have everything done, and we should be cleaning dishes around 12:00. So thank you all very much for your support of this awesome program that takes care of people within our community, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Boyer. And good evening, Councilmember Shenegas.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council, Administration, citizens in the audience and at home. I'd like to invite you out to a bingo fundraiser to benefit the Hemler family. Wanda was diagnosed in July of 2024 with Lou Gehrig's disease. This devastating disease has no cure, and Wanda would like to see her grandchildren enjoy the Walt Disney Experience. All proceeds will go to the Hemler family for this magical trip and other medical expenses. This special event will take place Friday, December 12th, doors will open at 6:00 PM, and the games will begin at 7:00. The tickets are $30. The raffle is, there's a 50/50 raffle and loads of fun, it's located at the Level Volunteer Fire Company in Haverty Grace. And if you cannot attend, you can donate to the fundraiser as well. In addition, I'd like to invite you to the Mason Dixon Large Scale Railroad that's going to be opening up November 28th through December. You can visit them at the luckiest light, they'll be set up in the back portion of the gallery, there will also be, on occasional Sundays, vendors set up there when you come in. The times that they'll be open will be Friday from 5:00 to 8:00, Saturday 12:00 to 8:00 PM, and Sunday 12:00 to 4:00 PM. So it's a very nice, pleasant way to celebrate people's hobbies that just love the railroad, and it's a special time of year to get out and help vendors in the community. I also want to say thank you to everyone for just being a wonderful community to serve with and to interact with as a citizen, and it's just a beautiful place to live. I'm thankful for my eight years of living here, and look forward to continuing my time in this town with you. Happy Thanksgiving to you all. Back to you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Shenegas, and we're gonna go to comments from Councilmember Booker, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, citizens with us in the audience, those are online, all the directors, I see former Councilmember Glenn in the audience, good to see you, sir. So November's been a pretty busy month, right? So November, November the 10th, I wasn't a Marine, but I do want to wish the Marines a happy birthday, I think they're 250 years old on November the 10th. November 11th brought us Veterans' Day, which was a fantastic parade. There was a huge turnout on the sidelines, it's probably one of the biggest turnouts that I've, that I've seen. Kudos to DPW and the additional police force that was out there. I hope you enjoyed your bowl of soup at the Legion, if you guys had a chance to get down there and grab, grab some of that. The very next day, November the 12th, was the Route 40 Business Appreciation that I had the pleasure of attending at the Van Dever, along with, along with the mayor. The mayor was kind of grilled with several questions there, but he handled himself eloquently as always, always support the Route 40 corridor businesses, especially with the attendance. On the, on the subject of the, the November 4th Aberdeen City Council, that Councilmember Jones was talking about, I believe they had about 900 folks show up out of a city of 16K, so less than 1%, you know, if my bar napkin's correct there, but anyway, it was enough to secure, you know, to, to secure them for their lawmakers for their next four years, is, I think was their, was their terms. And under, under business, I, what I want to do is, not tonight, but I want to go ahead and let the Council know that every year we have, we have elections, and we bring in, you know, members, right? So, and what I want to do is actually kind of have some kind of a tour or a briefing and so forth with the Star Center, so that we're kind of aware of like some of the budgetary needs and whatnot, so when the budget does arise, so the new members can actually take, take a look at it and be, be more informed. So that's my business, under business, and I will close with thanking the fire department, the EMS, my beloved Tuscaloosa House Company, and of course, first responders, and our police department, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Booker. And we're gonna go to comments from Councilmember Ellis.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, Council, directors, citizens, here and at home. I wanted to, I wanted to say something, it's, it's, it's not gonna sound too great, but it's, it's important to say, as many of you know, I'm, I'm from Kent County, the middle school that I went to, they just had a kid take their own life, and, and that, I would like prayer for that, obviously, but I would like to say, the Haverty Grace Youth Commission is actually putting on a bullying series, a three-part series for parents. The first one is gonna be December 2nd at the Star Center. We have 60 spots, or we started with 60 spots, I'm not sure exactly how many are left, but I think it's extremely important, and I would love to see that sold out, so maybe Part Two and Part Three can, can expand a little bit and get some more people. We have free snacks and, and activities for children, if their parents have to bring them to the, to the event, because this is gonna be strictly for adults, and this will be being presented by Dolly Talks. The first session is going to include cyberbullying and online safety practices, and how to report, or reporting when, when the other options and systems have failed. I know a lot of people say that they call the school, or call, call here, call there, and, and don't really get the response that they want, so this should be a good resource for our community to make sure something like that does not happen here, so. And I want to end with happy Thanksgiving to everybody, and, and thank you for all the volunteers that are coming to help us with the, with the giveaway. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments, Councilmember Ellis. And finally, we're gonna go to the Council President.
All right, just doing some math right here, I apologize. Also to Mayor, Councilmember Booker, I'd like to recognize a former Council President, David Glenn in the audience, football coach, baseball coach, all that stuff, good guy. So this past Friday, your Haverty Grace Warriors beat Patterson Mill for the second round of the playoffs. It was a tight game, 31 to 29, but we, we beat them, and so they mixed the entire, they reseeded everybody, and for Round Three, we're playing Perryville at home on Friday night. So they beat us pretty bad the first time, but then they found out, we found out they were cheating pretty bad, and they didn't do so well for the rest of the season, and we hope to avenge our loss, which was actually overturned and given to us from the beginning of the season, that's on the 21st, and if we beat them, it looks like we'll be playing Fort Hill at home on the 28th. So make sure you come out and support your Haverty Grace Warriors, you gotta go, there's an app called GoFans, you can buy the ticket there, they don't take cash at the door, or you can scan a QR code there, just come out, it's 7:00 o'clock, come out and support your Warriors.
That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, Council President, and we're gonna go to comments, we're gonna go to comments from Mayor's office now, all right. Just a couple things real quick. November's been a great month, we had a lot of great things going on. I do want to thank the American Legion for a wonderful Veterans' Day Parade. I also want to thank Hartford County Public Schools for giving kids off for Veterans' Day. There's a lot of counties in Maryland that do not give off for Veterans' Day, and Hartford County just started doing it recently. In fact, every year, every year, the last couple of years, the draft calendar for Hartford Public School does not have Veterans' Day off, but the, but the board members actually make it off on their own, so it's, anyway, it's one of those things where I think, personally, I think schools should observe all federal holidays, and not pick and choose which ones they want to observe, but that's just me, but, anyway, it's nice, though, the whole point, I bring that up, it's nice to have Veterans' Day off, because even in, you know, the windy, cold day that we had on November 11th, there were a lot of kids sitting there with their parents or their grandparents waving the American flag. How cool is that? You know, so that, that's a participation federal holiday, how many do we have like that, you know, so that's great. You know, we have Thanksgiving coming up, and already you're seeing a lot of Christmas lights coming up around the city, so we're not, there's that old debate, you know, when does, when does Christmas start? Is it before Thanksgiving, after Thanksgiving? It seems like you got the Christmas creep, you know, is it's coming up closer and closer to Thanksgiving anymore, but, you know, we won't turn the lights on until the night before Thanksgiving, we just, this takes a while to get all the tree up downtown and all the, all the light poles wrapped, I mean, you know, so light poles downtown, so light poles on the promenade, we wrapped the promenade, it's a lot of little things we do to get ready, so if you see the, the trees up and the lights, it's just because we're getting prepared for the big holiday season, and, but, our goal was, you know, we flipped the switch the night before Thanksgiving, because it's, it's a big night, and in my opinion, I know a lot of people who have visiting relatives and in-laws and grandparents that come down, I think it's always nice to take them downtown to see the lights, and I think the night before Thanksgiving's a good time, but, the main Christmas tree will not be lit until Holly Jolly First Friday on December 5th at 6:00, that's when the parade is. So, well, we have that tradition, and the tree is gonna be, the Christmas tree lighting is gonna be in the original location in front of the Masonic Lodge, the Concord Point Coffee. I know last year we had to do it at the Pennington Avenue location by the old visitor center, but we're gonna move it back to that, so. Thanksgiving's coming up, you know, Thanksgiving's one of my favorite holidays, because it's an American holiday. It's a holiday that no one else in the world celebrates but us on this day, and there's a lot of reasons we celebrate it, I mean, I could go into the whole history of it, but I know you all know the history of Thanksgiving, and, but, you know, the cool thing about Thanksgiving is everybody has their own traditions. Some people, you know, love to travel on Thanksgiving, some people, you know, like to go out and eat at a restaurant, some people just love to cook, everybody does their own little thing, and I think that's what makes it great, but I think at the end of the day, I think everybody is thankful on Thanksgiving. I don't think it needs to be said, I just think everybody is thankful for the things that are going right in your life, and the things that aren't going quite right, and I think everybody's kind of just a little more optimistic on Thanksgiving that things will turn around and work out just right for everybody. So it's a good holiday, it's an American holiday, and I hope everybody has a safe day, hope everybody enjoys a little bit of football on TV, if that's your thing, maybe some time with some friends, call some old buddies up, just to say hi, and don't forget, Friday and Saturday, if you're here in Haverty Grace and you want to hang out and have some fun, we got all kinds of things going on downtown, it's gonna be real pretty with the Christmas music on, the lights on, so we'll see you around Haverty Grace, hope to see you at the Holly Jolly Parade on December 5th. A lot of great things coming up in the month of December, and so we're gonna make all the Haverty Grace citizens very proud of their city, and anyone who wants to visit here, we're gonna make you, wish you want to live here, so take care, everybody, we'll see you at the December 1st council meeting, and if there's any other, no, there's nothing else on the agenda except for adjournment, you guys ready to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we have motion by the Council President, second by Councilmember Shenegas. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion to adjourn carries six zero and affirmative, the time is 8:35 PM, thank you very much, everybody. Happy Thanksgiving, we'll see you soon.